Number for District 205. There are three positions available. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. They will each present a one-minute introductory statement. The order has been predetermined by picking numbers. Then questions obtained from email will be asked, and each candidate will have one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements in reverse order of the introductory statements will also be one minute in length. League of Women Voters member Dave Williams will keep time, and candidates will strictly adhere to time limits. Candidates, please notice the timers. When you see the stop sign, you may finish your statement, but please let's not go on to a paragraph. Okay, we are ready to start. And based on the order that we have previously selected, we will start with Ms. Gall's opening statement. You have one minute, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this wonderful event. I want to thank the hostess for this opportunity to speak to voters and present ourselves as candidates. It's been difficult during the pandemic and this winter to get our faces and voices out there. I'm going to start by sharing with you my website. It's very important that you have a place to go to find out more about me and learn more of my position and my previous experiences and see some examples of some of my ideas. I will begin by letting you know that as a classroom teacher, I intend to be a boots-on-the-ground sort of school board member. I intend to be able to look at each approach, each challenge and approach it with the idea that, will this improve instruction? Will this help students? And will this be best for our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gall. Ms. Arvinitis?
Thank you. Glad to be here. Happy you're all tuning in. My husband Nick and I, a little bit about myself. We moved to Elmhurst 10 years ago to raise our family, and we have two daughters who are in fourth and second grade at Field School. I'm also an education began my career as a teacher and after six years moved into school administration. I currently serve as the Assistant Principal for Student Programs and Operations at Newtshire High School in Winnetka, and I've been with that district for 18 years. As a seasoned school administrator in a high-performing district with a highly engaged community who has high expectations for their schools, I have a thorough understanding of what effective partnership between the community, the board, and the administration looks like and how to foster positive working relationships while representing the voice of the community. I'm running for school board because I think it's important that we continue to provide our students with a high-quality education. I'm committed to ensuring our district offers a school environment the children of our community need and the residents want, of Elmhurst want. I believe we have an opportunity to move forward together. Looking forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
Hi, I'm Gordon Snyder. I grew up in the western suburbs, graduated from the University of Iowa and started my career as a civil engineer shortly thereafter. Begging, I got married and moved to Elmhurst in 1998. We have two boys, Hayden, a graduate of York, and Everett, currently a junior. When our older son was born, I became a stay-at-home dad for the next 10 years. When he began school at Emerson is when I first became involved in our community. I was PTA treasurer and served on numerous committees at both Emerson and Churchville. More recently, I've been part of the District 205 Finance Committee for the last two years. As a professional engineer, I manage road and bridge construction projects throughout the Chicagoland area. As part of the referendum, we're going to be building schools that will stand in Elmhurst for decades. I want to ensure that they're designated, I'm sorry, designed and built with learning spaces to beat the demands of today and the flexibility to adapt future needs. Board needs a subject matter expert who can provide strong guidance. If elected, I'll be that person. Thank you.
Ms. Ciforio.
Thank you. I'm Cara Ciforio. After volunteering in the district for 11 years, I ran for the board in 2017. We had good schools, but I believe we want excellent schools. I have since worked tirelessly to challenge the status quo and advocate on behalf of our students and taxpayers. In the past three years, under my leadership as board president, we have passed a $168 million referendum touching all 13 buildings, implemented all-day kindergarten, improved curriculum and instructional models for all students, especially special ed and ELL, expanded STEM, including a manufacturing lab and business incubator, increased expenditures to bring our buildings back to life, maintained a strong financial position, secured a permanent home for our transition students, and resolved longstanding stormwater issues with the city. I am grateful for all we have accomplished as a community in a few short years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jim Collins. I'd like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to talk with you. I've served on the board since 2009, and during my tenure, I've done my best to improve the quality of education in our schools and be a good steward of our taxpayers' resources. While I served as board president, our schools won four Blue Ribbon Awards, and York High School achieved its highest-ever composite ACT score and ranked in the top 1% of all high schools in the nation. I led the board's effort to refinance our school district's debt, saving our taxpayers over $14 million. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I've led our board, our bond issuance program for the 2018 referendum. We promised our taxpayers that the tax, that the tax bill on a half-million-dollar home wouldn't go up more than $150. Through judicious timing of issuing those bonds, we've reduced that tax increase to just $34. I'm running again to see the bond issuance program to its finish and improve student achievement in our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. I'm Laurel Cremanti. Thank you all for taking the time to be here this afternoon. I'm happy to be here and tell you a little bit more about who I am and why I'm running for school board. In talking to community members over the last few months, I can't tell you how many people have said to me, you're a working mom with young kids. Why would you ever want to commit the time to run for the school board? But for me, that's just it. This year has been so, so hard for working moms, who have made, many of whom have made the tough decision to leave the workforce in huge numbers. And we've seen how our voices and experiences are not well represented in policy discussions, what tangible policies have come about in the last year aimed at moms. Furthermore, the last year has highlighted the role of schools and teachers in keeping our hard-working families afloat. I think that it's imperative that the board include voices that bring different perspectives. I have young kids who will be in the district for the next 14 years, and I'm here because I'm committed to seeing them succeed and creating opportunities for them that I want for every child in District 205 to have. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to our first question, and we'll start with Ms. Arvinitis. It is wide-
Sorry, go ahead.
It is widely accepted that most students, but especially those at risk, have lost ground academically and socially as a result of COVID. What do you think the board's role should be in addressing these setbacks?
So it's a really great question because I think we have a lot of work to do as we move forward in our planning for our students. Clearly, nationwide, we'll be experiencing gaps in academic achievement, social-emotional learning. I think the board's role is to oversee the district's plans. So the district administration will be coming up with plans to bridge those gaps and ensure that we have provided the appropriate supports for students as they grow in both of those areas. The board's role is to implement, or sorry, to oversee those plans, but also to implement what I, the way I work is within continuous improvement, under a continuous improvement model. So we implement a plan, we gather feedback from stakeholders, we look at data and research, and we bring all that information back to continue to enhance the plan as we move forward so that we're ensuring that those gaps are minimizing for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, had a mute problem there. So the question is re-entry for the students after post-COVID, remote learning, basically. I think it's been a tremendous challenge for a lot of students. Remote learning has been difficult, I think, at best. And the gaps that have been, that have happened because of curriculum shifts are going to be difficult to bridge. With the shorter classroom days of all of the students over the remote learning and even in-person, the teachers could just could not physically get all of the material in during that time period. So identifying what has been skipped or otherwise needs to be re-learned is going to be key, I think, for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ciforio.
Yes. So the board's role is to provide the resources necessary to support what our students are going to need to catch up and fill in the gaps. I would expect to see there be an assessment this spring, actually, of what has been lost and where the gaps are. Conversations between staff and parents to understand what our students need, and then the administrative, administration developing plans that include teachers and administrators and parents to address the gaps. That would most likely include summer opportunities as well as additional support, not only academically, but particularly in the mental health area, as we know that many students, that has been, become the struggle. I would also expect there to be more regular updates so that we can adjust course as needed and if necessary, provide the resources moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the first thing we need to do is get our schools back open. We can do it safely, and they need to, they need to be open five days a week for a full school day. Then we need to assess what each child missed during our COVID crisis. We need to ask our teachers what's been left out of the curriculum and assess every student. Then we need to discuss different options, whether we extend the school year, have various summer school programs, or for some students, particularly in the younger grades, put what they missed in this last 12 months curriculum into future curriculum in future years. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. I agree that, you know, the role of the board here is allocating resources based on the assessment that the administration and the teachers do in this coming spring. So I think a really important job of the board is to really listen to teachers and families and administrators, because I really want to dig into this concept about how far behind students are and I think really take an individualized approach. We know that our teachers are excellent at differentiating instruction in a given year, but we can anticipate that there will be a larger need for differentiation in the coming year. I also deeply want to focus on bringing joy and play and fun back into our schools. I think that's something that we've lost over the last year. One teacher I spoke to mentioned to me that in the United Kingdom, there's a movement to declare this summer the Summer of Play for Children. So that's something that I'm really cognizant about and thinking about how we can allocate resources to make sure that we have the counselors, social workers, the support staff that can really improve the mental health of our students in the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gall.
Thank you. A lot of conversation has been about losing ground, and that is something we'll definitely need to look at and find what students need and how we can best meet those needs in the classroom. However, I have had some students do incredibly well in this uninterrupted, self-directed guided learning. And I have felt sort of bad that there aren't as many gifted or enrichment opportunities through the program, and I have looked for resources for students to use so that they can explore what they're most interested in academically. So I think there are different needs. We'll find different strengths, and I think that we'll come through this very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number two, starting with Mr. Snyder. Other than COVID, what is the biggest issue that needs to be addressed in District 205?
So the referendum that was passed a couple of years ago is, I think, going to be one of the largest things that's going to happen in our district for the next four or five years. There will be construction projects at all of the individual buildings as well as a complete rebuild for both Lincoln and Field. These are going to be tremendous opportunities for us to create spaces, not only for today's learning, but also for a great space for us to use in the future, hopefully offering flexibility to adapt as the world adapts in the next decade, two, three, four, and long after we're gone. So I think that's an important thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ciforio.
Yes, I believe our greatest challenge is helping our people in our entire district heal from the, from the trauma of this, of 2020. I believe our students are going to need support. I believe our teachers have gone through a lot, and I believe our families have been through a lot. And it is going to take all of us sitting down and working together, having conversations about what we need and what we need to build on, what was working, what we actually liked during the pandemic. There are some good things that have happened, and building on those things to both heal and move forward strong for our students. I think we have had challenges in communication, and I think that sitting down and having conversations together as best we can is the starting point so that we can all come around and best serve our students.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
In my mind, the most important, the most important issue in this school district is student achievement. If you look at our numbers, they've flatlined over the last few years, and that's not fair to our students. Other school districts are improving while we have stagnated for a few years. We need to get student achievement on a steep upwardly sloping line, and we need the correct leadership to do it. And I completely agree with Gordon. We're, we need to be able to build what we're building under budget and on time, because he's absolutely right. It's going to be here for the next 100 years. Thanks.
Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. I think the really imperative issue moving forward is addressing communication and trust issues that I think we've encountered over the past year, similar to what Cara said. So some of the things I've been thinking about, if I were elected to the board, I would be really curious how we can take more initiatives to have more conversations outside of the sort of one-way communication of public comment in board meetings. You know, I also think about how we can reach out to people who don't currently have children in the school district schools, because that, we know that's a majority of our community. I, for one, don't have children in the district right now, so it's very hard for me to get information about what's happening, even though there are amazing, exciting things happening. The referendum is going to do phenomenal things for our community. All-day kindergarten is a huge boon for our community. How can we make sure we're communicating that to everyone so everyone can share that pride in our district? I also think we can make more of an effort in the upcoming year to be really a lot more present in the community and in our schools to rebuild that trust with our families and our teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Gall.
Thank you. If I were elected to the board, I would be very interested in having more community relations with some of the wonderful cultural organizations that we have around us. As a teacher, one of my favorite days to teach is field trip day, when the children get to be outside of their normal situation, going to the zoo, the arboretum, the museums, and getting to explore. This is a very important opportunity for students, and I think that the board could play a role in creating a relationship for the school district with these organizations, not just outreach, but also education. A second priority would be to provide opportunities for underrepresented groups from the diverse families that we have in the area and being able to have conversations, workshops, and training on differently-abled, non-English-dominated students, LGBT students, maybe non-gender-conforming students, just being able to be aware of the diversity that our population has. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arvinitis.
Thank you. I echo a lot of what's already been said here in the room and appreciate all your thoughts and responses. I too believe that communication and repairing trust with our community is the top priority for our school district moving forward. Without that, so many other things fall apart and trickle down to the student experience. So my focus would be on listening to people, working together, offering influence and making more of an impact as a board member on the entire school community as a whole. The other thing we need to think about is how we're going to be transitioning a brand-new superintendent to our district and community. So the role of the board is going to be to support that superintendent in their plans and to influence those plans as they go, as they move forward. It's critical to work together and to make sure that we're all on the same page sooner rather than later. Finally, our construction projects are important. They're already in motion. Oversight from the board is going to be needed related to the budget and timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number three, starting with Ms. Ciforio. What do you perceive as both strengths and challenges of District 205 Special Education Program and Services?
As a parent of a special-needs child, I'm acutely aware of the strengths and challenges of District 205 Special Education Programs and Services. We have made great strides towards improving the educational experience for our students with the addition of co-taught classes, offering our teachers a reading specialist endorsement, adding assistant principals and instructional coaches at each school for additional support and expanded professional development. There will always be challenges. I believe a pressing need is to improve our data analysis in order to laser-focus our efforts and resources to measure growth in particularly our core class areas, math, reading, and writing for our students. On the social-emotional side, our special education students now spend more time in general education classes. The addition of the Nora Project, Special Olympics, and Best Buddies have expanded the social environment for many of our students and have contributed to a more inclusive environment at our schools. And I love that their peers take on leadership roles befriending those with challenges.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
I'm not the parent of a special-needs child, and, but as a board member, I've made myself available to listen to parents. I empathize with their challenges and their desire for their children to receive the best education possible so they can reach their full potential and lead productive, fulfilling, and happy lives. Parents tell me they don't want just inclusion, but they want inclusion to be meaningful. That entails cultivating a larger school-community culture that gets to know them as individuals. I'm told parents feel they need to advocate for their children at every turn. Clearly, there's a reason they assume fighting is a more practical option than having a conversation. I think many of our special ed parents are simply exhausted. As board members, it is not our role to analyze and, and write a special ed program, but we can advocate for change and attitude. If people trust they're being heard, they're far more likely to view their relationship with our district as collaborative instead of combative. I think board members can work to build a more meaningful conversation with special education parents and work to create meaningful changes.
Mr. Collins, thank you. Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. My understanding from talking to parents and staff is that there are many things in our district that we're doing well in terms of special education. I've heard really positive things about all the work that's gone into developing the multi-tier system of supports and how that plan makes sure that all the supports that are in place are clear and cohesive and sort of the, the tier of how students are supported is really clear. Parents have spoken really highly to me about the support their children receive at the Madison Early Childhood Center, which I think is really an exemplar for our community. And I think the fact that the district is investing in new, the brand-new Transition Center is a great opportunity to serve our high school and young adult learners with special education needs, which is a huge asset for our community. I think from talking to parents, one of the things that I see is one of the biggest needs is an opportunity to decrease the caseloads for our current special education teachers. So are there opportunities for the board to allocate resources to increase the number of special ed teachers in our district? And that might decrease the caseloads, which would lead to greater outcomes for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gall.
Thank you very much. Elmhurst Special Education Program is phenomenal. Having taught and tried to help other students and needing them to be evaluated or referred for services, I found that this program was very timely, very responsive, and very comprehensive. It is top-notch. One of the things that did surprise me, however, was sometimes in one school, a parent might come with a lawyer to an IEP meeting to make sure there's an advocacy for their child's needs, whereas another family might not have that resource and that opportunity to do so. So I would like to look into general education about special ed and what the IEPs are and what the parent role is in involving in that so that all students who do have special needs could get all of the services available. I'm also curious to know if maybe there would be a way to help paraprofessionals who do spend their entire day with these students on a one-to-one might get some of their own very special training and some of their own special supports as paraprofessionals. Thank you.
Ms. Arvinitis.
I also don't have personal experience with the D-205 Special Ed Program or the services it provides, but the more people I talk to, the more I learn about the different perspectives regarding district services. I would say that a strength of our program is the resources our district has available to it to provide a variety of supports at a high level of service to the broad student population that overcomes special ed. I think another strength of our program is our teachers and instructional aides who work with and truly care about our kids. An ongoing challenge in picking schools nationwide is the increasing demand for special education services. The percentage of student populations that need this support is growing, and everything about those supports is costly. It's important for the administration to have processes in place that create equitable access to opportunities for students, ensure they abide by the law and the rights of the students, and make decisions based on what is best for each student while having a handle on district spending and budget parameters. The board should focus on ensuring adequate funding for these services while paying attention to budget trends over time.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
I believe our special education teachers and staff are the biggest strength of the district. The biggest challenge is the students in this group are very so widely in both abilities and needs. Special education students require adaptive spaces and methods of learning and development. As a board, I think we need to make sure that we are incorporating the best practices available to ensure that this group of students not only succeeds but thrives. This group may have perhaps suffered more than most during the pandemic. The recent purchase of the abbey will create a permanent home for the Transition Center. The creation of the spaces within this existing building are important to meet the needs of the older students in this population as they move outside our district and into the larger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number four, beginning with Mr. Collins. Are diversity, equity, and inclusion part of your vision for our community? Would you be open to forming a committee that includes community members to reinforce these values?
I think that's a perfectly reasonable suggestion. We have schools where 56 different languages are spoken at home. We have a wide diversity of our student population, and I think listening to parents is always a great idea. So yeah, I'd be open to putting a committee together to figure out how we can do a better job, because I'm sure we can.
Thank you. Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. I appreciate this question. I deeply believe that it is in the best interest of our community and our students to really focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the next few years. I would definitely support the formation of a committee. I think there are tough conversations to be had, and having those tough conversations face-to-face with people in small-group settings is the best way for us to move forward and really gain perspectives that we wouldn't otherwise have. And this is something I'm really committed to when I think about ways that we can make sure that all of our students feel valued, like they have a sense of dignity and that they're appreciated for the unique differences that they bring to our community. I think this is really critical. If I were elected to the board, this is something that I would work tirelessly for. I'm really eager for the board to make sure that we can make metrics that we can hold ourselves accountable to. I think that's really where the rubber hits the road. It's not just having a committee with conversations. It's having measurable goals that we can achieve to really show that we're making progress in diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gall.
Thank you. I agree with Laurel. I am currently on a committee in my own district that's made up of thirty-five different people and we meet for two and a half hours every two weeks. But it's very difficult to get headway. So it would be very important to make this a manageable committee, maybe in smaller groups, addressing very special, specific interest groups that maybe have not yet had the equal opportunities to make the equal outcomes that we're looking for in our district. Social workers and counselors play a huge role in this and are available to help students and families master or speak up for themselves as well as communicate their needs and appreciate each other's differences. This is an important priority for me and especially the explanation of Title I funds and how they are being spent and how they're being used and what benefits they're providing to our students. As this person who's worked in Title I schools my whole career, it's often important to understand that children come in the door with much less vocabulary, much less world experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arvinides.
Every student and staff member should feel safe, welcomed and respected in schools everywhere. Regardless of their race, gender identity, sexual orientation, ethnicity. I for one am very supportive of forming a committee that would work towards raising awareness, building a common language in our schools, creating an environment where we can learn more about student experiences, specifically students of marginalized groups and learn from their perspective so that we can implement change. Thank you.
Mr. Schneider.
I think the formation of a committee is appropriate. I think the the era that we live in has been highlighted by some horrendous things that have happened in our world. And trying to get a better understanding for everybody on how to include everybody is important. I think there are things that the committee could do to, you know, establish a framework or otherwise highlight those things to make it easier to implement. Otherwise, as Marie said, it's a it's a committee that perhaps doesn't produce any fruit if it's just stuck in itself. Thank you.
Ms. Cafario.
Thank you. Yes, I agree that a committee is needed and would be appropriate. I think that one, it's one thing for a board of education to look at data and assessments, but you also need the piece of what is happening with our people. So it that involves being engaged with the community and in this case, a wide variety of the community, especially our students. I would really like to hear from our students and families what their experiences have been and how decisions at the board table could better support them to become more successful or feel that they have a voice. So yes, a committee that has a specific intention and a shared goal of improved success and understanding for our entire student population and also therefore our community.
Thank you. Question five. Starting with Ms. Cremanti. District two oh five does not have a comprehensive plan for transitioning to clean energy. Would you support the creation and implementation of an energy use transition plan?
Yes, thank you so much for this question. This is something I'm also very passionate about. I would definitely support the transition to clean energy in our district. I I deeply believe that the purpose of our public schools is to improve the lives for our children. And at the same time, the climate crisis is one of the biggest threats to our children's health and well-being in the coming generations. So I think District two oh five has an opportunity to advocate for environmental sustainability and become an exemplar in our community, making it really clear how accessible this really is. I had the honor of attending one of the Elmhurst Cool Cities meetings earlier this month, and some of the members spoke to me about their ideas for environmental sustainability in our school district. And they shared with me, we know that there is an initial upfront cost of, for example, moving to solar energy. But that's something that the school district more than makes up over the course of the contract. So I I read a school in Aldonquin will be saving over four million dollars in the next twenty years for having installed solar panels in their district. So it's certainly something that I think makes a lot of sense, both for the well-being of our community, our children's future and our finances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gall.
Thank you very much. I'm very much in support of this. I can't imagine someone isn't in support of this. My husband opened up a building downtown that got a LEED certification, which means it's a green building. And that green building is cost efficient, energy efficient, using renewable resources. I think this is a beautiful message to send to our students and community that we are thinking about the future. We're being responsible with our expenses and that we care that things are better, not worse as after we've been here. I think that students would be happily involved in this. My own children went to a school that had water tanks on top of the building and solar panels to heat it so that the hot water that was used in the building came from this energy. And it was a lesson. It was a science project. It was a field trip. It was all of these things for the students to understand about clean energy and about being more responsible. And it impacts choices for individuals and it impacts choices for communities. So I am very much in support of this and I hope that it happens.
Thank you. Ms. Arvinides.
I'm also in support of this concept and and learning more about it. First, I'd like to hear more about the measures currently in place by the district to reduce energy usage and any other energy efficient measures that have been implemented. I live close to field school and often wonder about the interior classroom lights I see on at different hours of the night. Low-cost implementations like motion detection light switches in all our classrooms and offices can save energy and lower utility costs for the school. This is one example of many different quick turnaround solutions that help manage facilities and their energy consumption. I'd also like to hear more about the district's efforts in larger implementations like purchasing energy efficient mechanicals in the new buildings we're building and renovating. Have we explored LEED certification? I probably should look into that a little bit more and will soon. The referendum building projects alone gave the district an opportunity to reduce their energy costs, create efficiencies and increase their carbon footprint. And I hope the current building plans reflect responsible energy use and decision making.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
I think many of us are eager to move to clean energy in our city and all over the world. This is a tremendously complex proposition and has a huge scale. The role of the school district, I feel, is to educate our children. While I believe we need to help our students understand and appreciate the impact on sustainability and climate overall, a clean energy plan and mandate, I think, is a bit overreaching for the school district. However, I do believe that we can incorporate smart, sustainable practices into our new buildings and facilities. There are things we can do to improve efficiencies, things like Athena noted with motion detectors on lights in our new schools as well as the buildings in the next few years that we'll be retrofitting our existing buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cafario.
Yeah. So prior to the pandemic, the district was in the early stages of creating a sustainability management plan and a review of related board policies. I do hope that that work will reconvene at some point soon. Our economy is generating more options and importantly, more affordable options all the time. Our new school, Lincoln School, will be a LEED Silver School. And we're very proud of that. The architectural firm and the and construction management firm have presented those as manageable options and cost effective, but also good for our environment. And as we implement as a district an aggressive maintenance plan as we have in the last couple of years, our facilities are more rapidly becoming energy efficient and in turn our limited resources are more wisely stewarded. Clean energy is an important part of the discussion and mindset when considering the sustainability and societal impact of our investments and the greater community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
My answer is, of course, I'm open to any plan that helps the environment and makes financial sense for our taxpayers. I was happy to work with Gail Runout from the Cool Cities Coalition to explore the possibility of upgrading our two new elementary schools from LEED three to zero net energy schools. And I'm happy to explore an energy trans- train, I'm sorry, an energy transition plan as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Question number six, starting back with Ms. Gall. How will COVID nineteen impact future contract negotiations with all levels of staff?
It'll have a big impact. Everyone is very concerned about their safety and their health. And as a teacher, I understand what my coworkers are feeling, what the custodial staff is worried about, what the secretarial staff has expressed concern for, the administration, the parents, the children. So I think it's going to have a huge impact on what we consider safe. The definition of three feet versus six feet, the definition of one face mask or two face masks. The requirement of one vaccine, two, two vaccines, two, three vaccines. I feel like this is a huge issue and it will have to require a lot of discussion, listening to a lot of concerns and trying to find a reasonable approach and assess that approach to make sure that it's working once it's in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arvinides.
Thank you. This is a really interesting question. It it has a lot to it and you can go down a lot of different paths. So I'll just pick one or two. So I would imagine that through negotiations, the staff would be interested in wanting to include more safety measures related to working conditions due to a pandemic, right? No one's ever lived through a pandemic before at this point. And obviously, there's probably language missing from contracts that incorporate these types of ideas when it comes to work conditions in the time of a crisis like a pandemic. The other is, I'd imagine that there'd be some interest in in better defining how we bargain the impact of district decision making and when that happens and what the process is. So when the board and the the district administration make a decision, then what happens when it comes to all the people that that work for us and how they continue to bargain the the impact of the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
So I think building trust is going to be a key for this as we shift back to having everybody in a smaller space than everybody being remote. The implementation of of masks and how that all works is going to be critical. I've seen some data regarding that and how that can the the implementation can be super impactful for transition or I'm sorry, transmission of the virus itself. I think that the the long-term solutions for, you know, teachers and and how they interact is going to have to be a discussion that we can hopefully navigate.
Thank you, Ms. Cafario.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Surely. How will COVID nineteen impact future contract negotiations with all levels of staff?
Thank you. And so obviously, this has been a challenging year for everyone. I think that you know, there's new considerations that have never probably really been thought about. And also for all of us, for, you know, the impact on how the actions of all of us have, you know, impacted students, how they impact our families, our community and the employees. So I think there has to be a sensitivity there that we're in new territory and start first by trying to understand and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Certainly want to keep everyone safe. And I'm certainly committed to listening to both sides to gain understanding of everyone's perspective. But I hope you'll understand that we are currently in contract negotiations with our teachers' union. And as a board member, I'm not really at liberty to comment much more than what I've just said. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. I think this is a really great question and very complex. And one of the reasons I decided to run for the board, I I really made the decision last August because I felt like our teachers at our school staff were being sort of unfairly represented as being to blame for the challenges in reopening schools fully. And I think that sort of conversation around this concept of blame is really unproductive and not helpful for the long-term sort of relationship building with our teachers and our community. So I think that's one of the things that I think is going to have a massive impact on bargaining in the future is how we rebuild trust with our teachers, how we show them that we are deeply grateful for the amazing work they have done in the past year, teaching simultaneously, remote and in person. I mean, that's like lifting mountains. And we are immensely grateful for everything that they've done for us and we really need to make that really clear and when we communicate with them moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Arvinides. Am I saying that right, Arvinides?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
How would you improve communication and transparency within District two oh five between the board and the staff and the board and the community?
Another really great question, you know, and I think that if we reflect on on what the district's been through over the course of the last year, we can probably pinpoint some opportunities where where communication and transparency could have probably been improved. And so how do we learn from those moments and take those lessons and move forward into the future? So a few things, I think, you know, we can talk about open and honest dialogue. We can talk about trust and rebuilding trust. I think all constituents are going to be watching the board, the administration, the staff, the students to see how we're engaging with one another. So we will need to remain professional. We will need to remain respectful. We would, we will need to assume positive intent in every conversation, even when we don't agree and get to or work towards a place of understanding. We're not really looking for, you know, agreement all the time. It's impossible to get thousands of people to agree on one thing. But how can we work towards common understanding? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
So I think that the current board has done a good job of actually communicating with the the community as far as the all the meetings that are videotaped, board docs that are available online. There is a wealth of information that's available. You have to know where to look for it, but it's there and it's not hidden. I think that it's a matter of of listening as far as building trust. You have to understand what is important and and make those communications go through a consistent chain of command. You know, whether it's it's with the the staff or with the community, I think that the consistency is the is the key, you know, with the staff. I think it should go through the administration. So I think as a community member, best way of being involved is with your local PTA when you have kids that are in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cafario.
Yeah, so definitely there have been challenges with communication in the past year. I think that you have to take the time to reflect and make adjustments. I believe that we need more opportunities for our community to be engaged, meaning feel that, you know, they are that there's another way to engage besides just public comment or on email, that there's a two-way conversation, which has been challenging in a pandemic where we've been in our houses. But I think that moving forward, those opportunities need to increase both at a school level and at a district level. I also think that internally, there have been some challenges with communication. And that is important that our staff feel that they understand what's going on as well. And many, I look, as I reflect, you know, you reflect and learn and move forward. And I believe a new leader will help us begin some new mechanisms for communication and building that trust to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Collins.
Think we've tried hard to have open and honest communication, but we can always do better. And I'm open to any suggestion that allows us to do a better job. I agree with Kara that I think some new leadership will have suggestions and be open to a two-way dialogue with our community. There there's many more ways to do it than than what we've been doing. And we just need to listen, try hard. And I've always tried to be available to anybody who's wanted to talk or communicate with me in any way. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cremanti.
Thank you. I know I brought this up earlier as one of the big priorities for the district moving forward is improving communication. So, you know, I definitely support a lot of what people have said here, how can we increase more two-way communication as opposed to sort of the one-way emails or public comment? And as I mentioned before, I think we need to improve communication with people who don't have children in the district, really celebrate the wins that we have. I think there are great opportunities to be had there. One thing I think really specifically that the board can do and and work with the administration to address is I've heard from a number of teachers that as changes have come about related to remote learning or hybrid learning or the move to in-person, they often learn about these changes at the exact same time the email goes out to parents or maybe just a little bit before. And so parents come to them with questions and they can't answer them because they don't have the background. And I think that kind of communication can certainly be strengthened. How can we make our teachers really allies with the administration and board in communicating about these changes? I think that's something that we can work together to fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gall.
Thank you very much. I was a little bit hesitant to run for the school board because I am very expressive. I am very responsive. And so if people are speaking to me, I might smile or I might be animated, have some gestures. And I realized that the board was quite stoic at different presentations and didn't really respond. And I felt like there needed to be at least some acknowledgement of a person's comment, some support for their engagement and involvement, some sort of compassion about what they're feeling, even if a board member maybe hasn't. And while I understand that there can be no individual response from a board member to speak for the board, and I understand that there's a written rule about coming straight from the president, I do feel like the board should be made up of people who can smile, laugh, talk, share personality and experiences that they've had in order to open that dialogue and have those conversations that are very important to learning about what's really going on in the community. And I know that I would bring that to the board.
Thank you. And our final question, we will start with Mr. Schneider. Evidence suggests that we are preparing kids for college and beyond. As was stated in October twenty twenty by Dr. Mary Ann Lem As was stated in October 2020 by Dr. Mary Ann Lemke, Executive Director of Research and Program Analysis in District 205, there is less strong evidence that we are preparing all our students equally. Do you feel that there is an ongoing issue of inequity in our school district? And if so, what are your strategies for alleviating it?
That's a long question, but I'll try to be short of my answer, I guess. Every child has a unique set of needs and our district needs to be dynamic enough to allow for a strong educational experience for each student. We need to remember that we have a diverse socioeconomic population, economic population, as well as a considerable minority population in our district. I support programs that are, that allow for flexibility. Also, I believe the pandemic has illustrated the fact that there are many avenues for a child post-ado, be it the traditional path to college or one that involves a work, trade, or vocation, or even immediately entering the job market. We need to support a wide range of options for our students to set them up for success in any of these choices. Understanding how to best meet the needs of each child regardless of background is important. There is more than one path for success. We should be able to prepare our children to be lifelong learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cefario.
Yes, I believe there is inequity in our school district. As a parent of three children who have attended almost half of District 205 schools and are currently attending schools in the district, I am acutely aware that there have been and continue to be discrepancies across the district. Historically, our focus has, as a district, has been on test scores, which assess students at only one moment in time. And currently, Dr. Lemke and the administration have been able to use some of our own data to show where we can and must improve. We are changing the conversation in our district that a test score is not the only thing that determines the success of a student. I believe the solution lies in a focused and unified approach across the district, assessing students, using data to drive instruction, and a shared understanding of expected growth outcomes for all our students. It is our responsibility to close all achievement gaps across our student population. Equity is understanding and providing where each student, what each student needs to be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Unequivocably, the data shows there's an achievement gap in our school district, but we're not unique. However, the great thing about our school district is we have the scale and resources to change students' lives and put them on a path to success in life. We just signed an agreement with Equal Opportunity Schools in an effort to close the achievement gap at high school level. We need to find similar programs to implement at middle school and the elementary levels. The key attribute to Equal Opportunity Schools is their philosophy. Their objective is to maintain high standards while providing the supports necessary to help our students clear that high bar. The best way we can change a student's future is to help them prove to themselves that they're capable of achieving academic success. The self-confidence that comes from achieving success in school is something no one can ever take away from them. Self-confidence is transformative. With self-confidence comes the ability to achieve success in life. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Crementi.
Thank you. I reviewed the data from Dr. Lemke and I, you know, came to the same conclusion that a lot of you did. There's certainly an achievement gap and inequity in the way we're preparing different groups of students in our district, and it's something that we can continue to work to address. I am really pleased about the Equal Opportunity Schools initiative as well. I think it's a great opportunity to help close that gap on the high school level, but, you know, the data from Dr. Lemke's study shows that, you know, thirty-nine percent of third graders who receive free and reduced lunches are meeting reading proficiency goals. So we really need to think about why is that happening? And to Cara's point, it's not just about test scores. I think we need to gather qualitative data from teachers and parents and family members to sort of dig into that. Why is this happening? And I think there's a lot of effort needed and resources need to be allocated to accomplish that. One thing that I'm really also heartened by is the All-Day Kindergarten Initiative. We know that early childhood education is an incredible way to help make sure that all students are prepared. The impacts of high-quality early education sort of balloon over the course of a child's school year. So I think that's something that could really improve in our district too. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Gall.
Thank you. I'm glad you said that, Laurel. As a teacher, I've learned that preschoolers in inner-city urban areas come in with four times less vocabulary than their suburban peers. So the amount of information that a child's learning from zero to four and understanding walks in the door of our school district system at an advantage. And trying to decrease that gap is a huge, huge undertaking, but it can be done. And it has to be done at every single level of the system, not just at the high school level with remedial courses. So I would look to that for a priori. I also think that college isn't necessarily what everybody's going to be doing. I agree with Gordon that vocational and other options need to be looked at. This pandemic has shown us that students chose community college. They chose to take a gap year. They chose to stop and reassess what they want to do. And it's no shame for students to find their pace, their place, and what they want to do at their time. In today's New York Times, they just, oh, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arvinides.
Thank you. I want to first start by saying, you know, every school in our country is in this air, in this moment of identifying these achievement gaps. And if there was one way to fix this problem, every school would be purchasing that way to fix this problem, right? And implementing it for their students. So for me, I have to say that we have to look at the unique needs of all students across the board and develop interventions that support them in their learning and growth. Specifically related to the data that was presented in the question, I need to understand the data a little bit better before I can determine whether there's an ongoing issue. But my, my experience tells me there are ongoing issues of inequity in education everywhere, from how schools are funded to the types of opportunities that are offered to students. So I'm interested to hear more from the administration on what their plans are. What are the exact inequities? How did we identify them? And what are some benchmarks we can put into place to ensure that students have equitable access to educational experiences? I'd have to ask the administration, what do you plan to do next? And that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to closing. We'll start and we'll go in reverse order. So we'll start with Ms. Crementi.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to run for this position and it's a gift of our democracy that we have these choices to make. There are a number of very qualified people here today, and I know it's tough to decide who to vote for. I think if you're looking for a fresh face with fresh ideas, who is willing to work hard in the long term, I would be honored to earn your vote. I'm running as an experienced educator. I didn't get to mention this earlier, but I'm a former elementary school teacher. I've worked in preschools, elementary schools. I now work in higher ed. So I have a long career of working with teachers and parents and families. I'm also committed to dialogue with our teachers and administrators. And I'm a parent who is really passionate about social justice and I'm ready to work hard to hold the board accountable to progress in equity and inclusion, environmental sustainability, and prioritizing social, emotional learning. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
First, thanks again to the League of Women Voters. Second, I just got my website up and running. Please go visit jimcollins205.org. And thirdly, I'd like to leave you with a final thought. People ask, you know, what are going to be the long-term effects that, of COVID? And when I look at why people moved to Elmhurst, I think the two main reasons are we're the second stop on the express line to the western suburbs. And the second reason is we have very good schools. I think post-COVID pandemic, I think companies are going to reduce their real estate footprint and allow more and more people to work from home. So that really removes our strategic advantage of being that second stop of the line. So we really need to double our efforts to move from being, having very good schools to having great schools. Our property values and the future of our community depends on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cefario.
Yes, thank you to the League. Serving our community these past four years has been one of the greatest honors of my life, and I would be extremely honored to serve the community in this capacity again. I am grateful for all we have been able to accomplish together. I'm also sensitive that approximately seventy percent of our community does not have a student in our schools and am mindful of the great responsibility the Board of Education carries to ensure a high-quality education for our students and a return on the taxpayers' investment. I would consider my second term in office a success if our students and staff are thriving in our buildings, the achievement gaps that exist are actively closing, we have healed from the traumas of 2020, our $168 million facility projects are completed on time and on budget, and most importantly, our sense of oneness as a community and pride in our schools is restored, and we take our place as a nationally recognized, top-ranked district that is known not only by what is achieved, but by the depth of our character. We are one community with infinite possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider.
So when we moved to Elmhurst twenty-plus years ago, we had no children and didn't really have any interest in the school system. But being the son of a Realtor, I knew that it was important. Schools and the quality of schools have an enormous impact on property values. I've been here for a long time. I think I understand a lot of what the community expects from the schools. But as a professional engineer and manager, personally as a coach, as a volunteer and active member of the community, I think that integrity and ethics are at the core of my being. I tell my sons that character is what you are doing, what you do when no one's watching. I ran for this board in 2019 for the same reason I'm running today. I believe I can make an important impact on the framework of the educational system in Elmhurst to ensure we leave a legacy of success, not just for today's children, but for tomorrow's. We should never accept good. We should always be working towards great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Ms. Arvinides.
Thank you to the League. I'd also like to thank the other candidates for their thoughtful responses and willingness to put themselves out there. In closing, I hope the listeners walk away knowing that I care deeply about our community, our schools, and our children. And it's actually my life's work. This is what I do. I work in an environment that is very similar to Elmhurst when it comes to the expectations that they have for the school district and their community. We're at an important moment in time. Our community and children have been through a lot over the past year. And unfortunately, trust, communication, and collaboration have also suffered. It's time to put students first, listen to one another, and model the true values of Elmhurst. I'm excited for the opportunity to pave a more student-centered path in our district, to listen and learn together. Our children's social, emotional, and academic well-being is at stake, and we need a strong plan to move forward in the right direction together. We need to be better, and if you vote for me, I intend to work to make this current situation better for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gall.
Thank you to the League for this wonderful opportunity. Voters have a lot to weigh in their minds and they have to think about their personal priorities. Again, I'm the in-the-classroom teacher who's got her boots on the ground, will be giving you a personal experience with whatever sorts of decisions are being made in a day-to-day basis. I'm a proud parent of two York graduates. I'm also bilingual, and I really welcome the dual-language program that has been implemented in the district. And I am a proud supporter of the World Language Department at the York High School. I feel like I have learned a lot about myself and this community through this process. It's been awesome to talk to people and find out what their interests and priorities are. And I feel like this is a great opportunity, and I would love to earn your vote for this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Our time is up for this forum. Your participation, excuse me, as a candidate and as a voter, is essential to preserving our freedom and our country. Please remember to vote on April 6th or before. As one vote, you can decide the election, and then that one vote could be yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.